We're going to start, welcome to Potter County Government Day. We're glad you're here. It's so good to look out and see all you young folk out here. My name is Nancy Tanner and I'm the Potter County Judge. In addition to presiding over the Commissioners' Court, I also preside over the Mental Health Court, Probate Court, Guardianship Court. I do some hot check cases and we do indigent burials. So even though this is probably my most important job, it's my least favorite because it's very, very difficult. I'm going to introduce the Commissioners. Commissioners and I are responsible for taking taxpayer money and using it wisely. And sometimes that's really, really hard. I mean, meet with obstacles because we, as you will see, you don't have a voucher on your desk, on your table, but the vouchers can range anywhere from buying toilet paper to building a building. So today we're spending all over $2 million paying some bills. So it's a hard job, so I don't do it alone. I've got Commissioner H.R. Kelly, if you won't stand. Commissioner Marson Morgia. Commissioner Leon Church. And also Commissioner Alfonso Vaughn. Together, together we work to do what's best for the county, not only for the taxpayers, but also for the county employees that work here. I want to take just a second and recognize the committee that worked so hard to get this done today. I'm going to call you names and I want you to stand and remain standing until everyone's been recognized and hold your applause until that is done. LeAnn Jennings, Treasurer, if you'll stand please. Brooke Bertram, Assistant Treasurer. Dave Kemp, I think he's on the stage somewhere. If you'll stand. He's Assistant County Attorney. Sandra Hanna, wherever you are, Sandra. And Sandra is the Records Management Director. Kay Holland, where is Kay? She is our HR Director. Carrie Hood, also on the stage, she is our County Auditor. Very, very hard job. She counts all the money. Sherry Ayler, Sherry. There's Sherry. She's our Tax Collector Assessor. Julie Smith, she's a county clerk and along with her is her Assistant Stephanie Minka and she's Julie's right-hand person. And last but not least, Commissioner Morgia and Commissioner Kelly. Thank you very much for job well done. This time I want to recognize all the schools that are here. And I'm doing this alphabetical so you won't think I'm partial. Okay, so when I call your, when I call the school out, I want everybody from that school to stand up. And on the stage, to go up there right now, his name is Ganesh Gangani. Thank you, Ganesh, for joining us. Okay, Bushland High School. There we are. Jeremy, Jeremy Havery will be on the stage. Is it Havery or Havry?
Second one.
Second one, Havery. Caprock High School, stand up. And on the stage will be Aurelio Barrera. Thank you so much. And on the stage is Waylon Hassan. Is it Hassan or Haasen? Oh, the N was left out. Hate computers. And on the stage for Paladura is Brandon Blount. River Road. And on the stage with River Road is Courtney Thompson. Come on up, Courtney. And last but not least, Tescosa. And on the stage for Tescosa is Zach Wall. Let me remind you, just real fast, the men's restroom is here, women's restroom over here, just in case any of you might need to use that. Okay, I want to thank all of you for coming. It looks so good to look at here and see all these students. I would say they had this when I was in school, but when I was in school, there were barely lights. So I want to thank you for coming, for taking the initiative to be here today. And I hope that you find it enjoyable, exciting, maybe maybe not too boring, but at least you got doughnuts and you're going to get lunch and a day out of school. So you can't beat that. Jason, if you'll stand up. Jason is our IT guy. He has set up a Twitter account for y'all and it's, the account is on your table on that blue flyer. So if you have any questions or comments, and if you don't want to come to the podium, just Twitter, tweet, sorry, tweet, don't Twitter. Tweet to Jason and he will, he will get those questions to us after the meeting and we will be happy to honor them. Is there anything else? I want to thank you Doughnut Stop for providing the doughnuts and for our ex-APD officer picking them up. How appropriate was that? And also Young Bloods is going to cater lunch, I think, or having hot dogs and hamburgers. So right up y'all's alley, I'm sure. Okay, so, so I'm going to leave you with this. Remember this. This is very serious. The two most important days in your life are the day you were born and the day that you discover why. I want you to focus on that last part, okay? Okay. I'm going to make my way to the stage now and as I do, I'm going to invite Jim Wallace up. He's the pastor from St. Luke's Presbyterian Church. He will do the invocation. If you all will stand please for the prayer and remain standing for the pledge to the United States Flag along with the Texas Flag. Some of you do not know that the words of the Texas Flag pledge, it's on your table. Thank you again for coming.
Let's pray. Gracious God, for this day and the sun shines across the Panhandle of Texas. Another day of opportunity, another day of challenges, and each of those in itself is an opportunity. We give you thanks for government under which we live, that we choose those who sit at this table behind me, that we and they together work for our communities and for the good of it. I pray this day that those who come before the court might be heard and those who listen will listen wisely and the decisions made might be those that you would have to make. I pray too for the students that are gathered here this day because the reality is that it's very likely that someday one of them may sit as an adult alongside another student on this stage behind me. Gracious God, to you we give all praise and thanks. And we give thanks for you and for your love. I pray Christ's name. Amen.
Yep, okay. All right, we will call Potter County Commissioners' Court to order. Today is Monday, April 11th, 2016. The first item of business is recognition of minutes from March 28, 2016, Potter County Commissioners' Court meeting. Do you have any comment or changes on that? If no, so recognized. I'm going to skip around just for one second. Jason Patrick has asked me that he wants to be first because he wants his people to get back to work. So Jason, if you want to come on up, we're going to do number 13. Professor, send me to read it. Information technology to recognize Potter County's receipt of the 2016 Technology Solutions Award by Public Technology Institute in Washington, DC. Way to go.
I'm really proud of our guys. As you know, the IT department is split into two teams. We have a team of developers that do nothing but write software and then we've got a team of folks to do all the help desk and infrastructure work and all that. And I've got a few of those folks here. If I get them to stand up, Katie Duran, Rick Lewis is here, Kirk Farquhar, Jeff Earhart, and Sean Holdman is going to be joining us here in a couple of weeks as our newest member of our team, so we asked him to be here. If I give a round of applause for these guys.
Brandon?
And Brandon's here. Oh, Brandon's back there hiding. Okay, Brandon, and another round of applause for Brandon.
Brandon, yeah.
Couldn't see him. We, we, we won this award competing against much larger jurisdictions. Some of the other winners that we beat out this year from the past were Baltimore, Maryland, Atlanta, Georgia, Dallas, Texas, the state of New Jersey, and our team here at Potter County beat those guys out. So it's pretty awesome.
Jason, what was the criteria, the framework for the award? I'm interested to know how we beat those big metro areas out.
No, it was, the Public Technology Institute is based out of Alexandria, Virginia, just outside of Washington, DC. And they're a consortium of local governments, cities and counties, specifically from all over the country. There's 20,000 or so cities and counties that are members of this. And they have a panel of judges from across the country that review entries and review their clientele on a regular basis. And this award was for our virtual desktops that we put together. And I know there's been some growing pains across the county as we try to adapt new technology to our old infrastructure that we had. And thank y'all for your patience as we do that, but that's what this award is for.
And the cost savings was, I'm assuming, a part of the application?
A part of it, yes.
That would be a big kind of element to highlight.
Yeah.
And that will be on our webpage?
Yes, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Jason. And then right above that, number 12, Potter Randall County, and then Potter Randall Child Welfare Board to recognize April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Darla Ingram is here in the audience. We approved this proclamation last meeting, but it's actually April is the month. So if Darla is here, Darla, would you stand up please? Everybody see you. She is here. Thank you, Darla, for passing out the little fans you got, just to be aware that this is Child Abuse Awareness Month. And Darla, did you want to say anything or? Okay, good. Why don't you have your help staff stand up then, let's everybody see them. If you would like a doughnut, help yourself. Okay, that is so recognized. And then I'm going to, I'm going to go to number eight. I'm sorry for messing around like this, but number eight is Amarillo Cultural District to consider and act upon the resolution authorizing certification of a cultural district for at least 10 years. Beth Duke is here to talk about that.
Thank you for having me today. I'm Beth Duke and I'm Executive Director of Center City of Amarillo. And on behalf of the Board of Directors at Center City, I want to thank Judge Nancy Tanner, members of the Commissioners' Court, and especially grateful today that we're here on Student Government Day with this great audience. And it's appropriate today that we're in the beautiful Santa Fe Auditorium because a big part of our cultural district is our great historic architecture. And Potter County has been a leader in bringing back these buildings, this one and of course the historic Potter County Courthouse. So I think, I think it's very appropriate. Center City is asking today for your support in the form of a resolution. Did we have enough? Did I have enough? In the form of a resolution because Center City is applying with the Texas Commission on the Arts to become a designated cultural district. Now, we believe Amarillo is already a cultural district because we have such a rich, varied culture. We have all of the performing arts, but we go further than that. The visual arts, the architectural arts, the culinary arts with all of our great restaurants and traditions, our festivals, our events, all of those factor in to making it a great arts district. Well, we started on this process about 18 months ago and it's an arduous process because we have to document our inventory of cultural resources and we have to prove to the Texas Commission on the Arts that we are worthy of this designation. 26 other towns in our state have this designation and we want to bring it to Amarillo. The northernmost district right now is Lubbock. And you know, with my civic pride, I don't want Lubbock to have anything that we don't have. We want that for Amarillo too. We believe the Panhandle is underrepresented in cultural districts and that's a big reason why we are applying to make this happen. We started about 18 months ago with meetings of groups of stakeholders and the first thing was to try to decide if we were ready. And the resounding answer was yes, and we've been working on this process now all these months. In February, we sent a letter of intent to the Texas Commission on the Arts and they accepted our letter along with those of 16 other towns. So there'll be 17 towns going for this application. What happens is our final deadline for our application is in June. The volunteer panels will look at this over the summer. They'll make their recommendations to the Texas Commission on the Arts and the Texas Commission on the Arts will vote on this in September. The process, like I say, has been, has been going on for, for a while, but a lot of people want to know, how does this benefit us? Well, it really literally puts us on the map. If we are a cultural district designated by the TCA, we can begin to put this on all of our materials, all of our printed materials, Potter County website, the great new video you have showcasing the quality of life in our county, all those things factor into it. You know, Center City is part of the Texas Main Street Program, which is part of the Texas Historical Commission and the National Trust. And we believe it gives us great prestige in our city to say that we meet or exceed all of those standards for our downtown. We want to do the same with the arts district. The other thing that happens is that last biennium, the Texas Legislature set aside $4.5 million in grant funds. And these are grants you can only apply for if you are a designated cultural district. Now, many organizations in our town like Lone Star Ballet, Little Theater Symphony, Windows on a Wider World, they already receive TCA grants, but this is a separate allocation only for cultural districts. So we believe by having this designation, we can go forward to seek that grant money to make some of our existing events bigger and build more partnerships and collaborations because that's what they look at, is a community working together. On the second page of your handout, we have our cultural district map. And you know, many cities, it's a tidy little courthouse square or a little pedestrian walking area, but you know, in Amarillo, we never do anything quite like that. Our district evolved because this is where we have the density of cultural attractions. And then we tried to connect them through walk trails, bicycle trails, major thoroughfares because that's what TCA is looking for, the density and the impact of cultural districts as well as ways to connect them. And I think our district kind of looks like a little puppy dog, sort of, if you think about it. But we included, of course, downtown with the Globe News Center for Performing Arts and all the great things downtown. We included Sunset Center, which has such a huge concentration of galleries and artists. We included Historic Route 66 because that is a major magnet for tourists all over the world and really a burgeoning art district. Then we made a little circle down to Little Theater, Adventure Space, Cirillian Gallery, the Red Gallery in the Civic Circle area. And that also emphasizes how the whole Wolfland Square and Wolfland Village are coming back with their restaurants and galleries. And then, of course, the Washington Campus of Amarillo College with its historic buildings, AC Fine Arts, Amarillo Museum of Art and the Amarillo Museum of Natural History, which you may not have ever visited, but it's an amazing collection of bugs. So if you like bugs, go, go see the museum. And then on up to downtown. So that's why my district looks weird, but in order to capture some of the highest densities of cultural assets, that's how we developed our map. And we're going to be working to try to work harder and harder to connect these areas to encourage people not to just visit one area, but the whole district.
I do have a couple of questions, Judge. So Beth, as it relates to the map and the boundaries, because this certainly sets the tone, the conversation reminds me of when the tiers map was established and the zone and kind of everything in it.
Yes.
How do we, or is there still an opportunity to include some of the rich history for East Amarillo and the railroad tracks and even along the north side? The tracks have always been such a great cultural and historical element of the city. And so what I find is the map obviously sets the tone. And so if you're not in the map, you're not eligible to receive those funds. And I know this is a conversation that you and I have had in particular about East Amarillo because there is such rich history.
Yes.
The problem is it's not documented anywhere.
That's right.
And so how do we as a city, if this is something that we're really going to undertake and there's only 26 in the whole state that have it, how do we make sure that we are aggressively trying to include all cultures in all parts of the city with the way that it was originally established? If that makes sense?
Yeah, that's a good question. The way we're going to do that, the way we hope to accomplish that is through our partnerships. A good example is that Texas musical drama, of course, is such a magnet for tourism. They're not obviously in Amarillo, they're in Paladura Canyon, but they are a partner because they perform every summer in your Hyndin on the Square, right here at the Potter County Courthouse. The Botanical Gardens, they're a big partner because they have music in the gardens. We have the sounds of summer. Any, any way we can show and document a partnership, even if it is outside the boundaries, that's what we want to do. And so my idea is in the future, if we have maybe an art exhibit one place, maybe have it one, be out one gallery for one month and then move it someplace else for another month and build those partnerships to try to address all the different neighborhoods.
But as it relates to expanding the map, I guess that's my question. If there's a potential to expand the map to include areas of our city that you don't often get a lot of attention, and I guess where the root of my question is, I did see on the grants that you mentioned, and so I can certainly see why you're pursuing this because I saw two grants. I think one was called the Arts Respond Project Grant, which was a potential for 1,000, but then there was a cultural district grant that ranged anywhere from $10,000 to half a million dollars, which could certainly be a game changer for anywhere in this map.
That's right.
But my thought is, if you're not included in the boundary, you wouldn't be eligible to receive those funding. Is that a correct assessment on my part?
Well, you would, you would as a partner.
Okay.
The TCA will not just accept a whole city.
Sure.
Boundaries.
Right.
So when we were making our assessments about designing the map, at our meetings, we gave everybody dots and we said, put dots where you know there are galleries, venues, historic buildings, and these are the areas we came up with. Some districts in, in the past have expanded after they got the original designation. But they have to be able to document the density and the connectivity of those, of those partnerships.
So that is still part of the conversation?
It is.
It would still be part of this moving forward. And Commissioner Vaughn, where I'm thinking of also is the Amarillo United Citizens Forum on North Hayden there that has a lot of history.
It has.
It's still a meeting spot for North Amarillo. So if there's an opportunity to truly partner and say, we're going to look at where are those other pockets? Because they don't get a lot of visibility today, so I wouldn't be surprised if they're not on someone's dot, but how do we make sure that we pull them in?
And I think that's, that's the main thing of partnerships. It's very difficult to, to create a district that connects because they really want a walking district. Well, we knew we didn't have a walking district, but we have a driving district. So what we're trying to do is not just pick out the entities, but figure out how we can make those strong connections.
Okay, well certainly as you're ready for those partnerships or those opportunities, I'd be willing to work with you.
Thank you.
And make recommendations as, as you see appropriate.
Thank you.
Two more questions.
Sure.
I also noticed the other cities that have this designation, they noted, they documented best practice was for staffing for the district. How will that work? Is that just 100% under Center City's umbrella now?
Yeah, right now, we decided, we, we really believe that instead of creating another nonprofit organization, that this would come in as a standing committee under the board of Center City. And we'll be working on assembling that governance structure. Some cities have it as part of city government, some have it as freestanding, some have it as a separate nonprofit. We decided to start out with, under our umbrella would be stronger and maybe someday it will grow to be its own, its own entity.
Okay. And then as it relates for funding, so on the resolution, the very first part, the article indicates that the county endorses the submission and agrees to participate in the development and financial support of the said district. So I'm interested to know what that financial support is as we start to get ready for budget and any tone that we might be setting.
Sure.
Include that language.
We are not currently seeking any financial support right now. Potter County is a great in-kind support with your donation of the Potter County Lawn for Hyndin on the Square. I know you led the MLK Birthday Celebration, had that on the Potter County Lawn. Right now, we're only looking at in-kind support. I don't truly know what that would look like in the future, but we're, we're just happy to play in your front yard right now.
And then I have one final question and I'm done. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't know this background, so I had to do a lot of research to understand the district. Because of the grant dollars and the opportunity for, let's just say a half a million, because we're going to shoot big.
We're going to shoot big.
On the grant opportunity, what, what do you have as it relates to long-term planning? Like I would imagine the district, if you're getting ready to apply, there's a few projects that you may already have in terms of a visionary perspective of if you got the money, what would you do with the money?
That's right. Well, our first goal is we want to bring a great art festival back to downtown. And so that is one thing we are already planning. The date on that is August 20th. It's going to take the place this year of our block party. And so the festival is going to be kind of our launch event for this district. And then as the governance group, the Advisory Board for this cultural district, as they sit, they, they have not yet convened, they're just now being put together, as they sit down and decide their goals and their objectives and their core values, then I know that we may be adding some events, but the main thing is going to be strengthening existing events and building more partnerships. Because we see collaboration as the way to go. We know Amarillo already has so many nonprofit organizations, so many artistic entities. We just think there's a way everybody can work together to make it stronger, even if that's helping, you know, a central calendar where people can go to to find out what's happening in their town. Or we've launched a Facebook page called Arts in Amarillo. We bought the artsinamarillo.com domain name. That will be the name of our webpage. And we want in the future, a one-stop shop where people can go to to find out all the things going on, no matter what part of the arts are interested in.
Okay. And then will we be able to receive a document of the inventory that you mentioned? There's a listing, a cultural listing of all the, that would be great just to have in the toolkit.
It would.
For the city.
It would. That will be part of our final application in June. And of course, that's our application to the Texas Commission on the Arts. So that entire document is public record and we'd be happy to share that with you or maybe make a copy if Potter County wanted to have it in its records.
I think the listing in particular would be helpful. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Okay, thank you very much.
I move that the Potter County Commissioners Court approve the Amarillo Cultural District Resolution as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Five to zero. Thank you.
And I will say to Beth, too, thank you for all the work that you have done and continue to do for this city and the surrounding area. And I, for one, would not bet against you as far as achieving that status.
Thank you so much. You know, this is something, we truly believe at Center City, and your words mean the world to me, we truly believe at Center City, this will help all of us because this is one of those rising tides that's going to just make our city so much better. So thank you for your support, and I'll see you June 1 at Hyman.
I attended one of your announcements on this, and I was amazed at the cultural, the artistic people in this town that have an interest in this.
It's amazing, yes.
All the questions were answered at those. And so it was interesting, and I thank you for everything that you do for this city.
Judge Tanner was at one of our meetings at Sunset Center, and I think she got some clay dust on her and maybe some paint, I'm not sure, but it was exciting.
Someone wanted to do a portrait of me. I don't know who that was.
And then we had, we had weavers and painters, and it was exciting to be part of that arts community.
Yeah, it was good. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with now with number two, budget amendments. To consider and act upon approving budget amendments for the 2015-2016 fiscal year.
Just a couple of reclassifications. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Carrie, I do have a question on item one, the purchase of the computer and computer accessories for County Court at Law Two. Did the computer just break, or is there a reason it didn't come through the budget, normal budget process?
As you know, the judges are not on Potter County rotation for computers. They're handled by CSD and they tend to do a repair as needed. And this one is, I don't know how old it is, I think it's about six years old.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
May we approve the budget amendments for the 2015-16 fiscal year?
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed?
Hey, Dave Ford. Yes, Judge. Thank you.
Five to zero. Thank you very much. Vouchers. To consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the County Auditor's Office for the period of March 23, 2016 through April 6, 2016. Check numbers 168006 through 168247, and wire transfer 699 through 707 in the amount Any comments?
I just have one quick comment for the court. On the vouchers, just a quick notification, there is the first payment for the parking garage, which, if I remember, a little over a half a million that I saw on the line item. So that is in these vouchers. And the contract is 50% when the project started, 25% when it's halfway done, and 25% at completion. I'm looking at Carrie, keep me updated. So that's in here this time.
I move that we approve of the vouchers as notified by the county for the amount so is.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Thank you very much.
Number four, quarterly budget comparison to recognize the second quarter comparison report for October through March fiscal year 2015 and fiscal year 2016.
I do have questions, I'm sorry, Court. Carrie, thank you for putting this on. When I said on the agenda, I thought, oh, she remembered. Thank you for making sure this gets on every quarter, I appreciate it. On page seven of the document, I'm right at the top, the JP number three office building. So this time last year, we were roughly at 37%, and this time on the expenses, we're at 72%. I was trying to remember if this was when the accident for the overhead door, if that happened this year or if it was the year before?
That was the year before, and actually, that was an insurance claim. What you're saying here is the work that we did on the jury room, we did some sound modifications on the jury room.
Sound modifications on the jury room?
Yes.
And that came through the budget process?
It did.
Okay. And then on that same page, and I stumbled in a little earlier, the elections and voter registration account. So last year, this time, we were at 47% on expenditures, and this year, we're at close to 62%. I'm assuming because it's a presidential year that there are additional expenses, but I don't know if that's true.
No, that is because last year, you asked us to cut our budgets as close as we possibly could.
Okay, so that's just the first one.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. And then I have one final question. On page 11 of the document, the account is public service. So last year, at this time, it was roughly $359,000 of expenses. Now we're $550,000. I couldn't remember, Carrie, what are examples of what comes out of that account, the building repair and maintenance?
I'll just give you a list here.
And it's the public service account right towards the top.
The largest item that we've paid at this point in the year that we had not paid last year is the emergency management Potter County share that we pay to the city. Other things that we pay, of course, is tiers, burial expense, our strategic planning, PanCon fair share commitment, Panhandle Community Services and hop planes we bank.
Okay, so it's just the timing of when this came through a little earlier this year? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, no more on that. That is so recognized. Thank you very much. Number five, financial report to recognize a comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2015.
I believe you all received copies before our previous meeting, and I asked Bob Womack from Davis-Connor to come and give you a quick overview of our finances.
Good morning. How are you all? It's an exciting day with all these people here. I don't usually get to present at a governmental in front of so many people. As Carrie said, my name is Bob Womack, I'm a partner with Davis-Connor and Abilene. We've been doing the Potter County Audit for a number of years. We actually do have an office in Plagueview, so that's a little bit more localized. You all received the document, and it's a pretty lengthy document with a lot of components in it. And I'm going to be fairly brief this morning because I know you all have a lot of stuff to do, and I think interest would be lost pretty quickly if I started going page by page. I am going to kind of go over some of the high points of the basic financial statements and kind of explain our auditor's report. And then if I can answer any questions regarding the audit process, I'll be happy to do that. On page, after the pages that are labeled in Roman numerals, on page one through three is actually our report of independent auditors. And this is actually our communication of the, our opinion of the financial statements to the governing board of the county, which is the Commissioners' Court. And at the bottom of page one, the paragraph that is titled Opinions, and our opinion of the financial statements referred to but presented fairly in all material respects the financial position of Potter County as of September 30, 2015, and for the year then ended. This is the fiscal year ended 2019, 2015. So it's what we call an unmodified opinion or an unqualified opinion. It's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion that you can get. In other words, we believe the financial statements are material, accurate. At the top of page two, I will draw your attention to the paragraph that's titled Emphasis of Matter. If you looked at last year's audit report and compared it to this year's, this is the only paragraph that is different, and it's actually in addition. During the year ended 9/30/2015, Potter County, as well as all local governments, were required to implement GASB 68. GASB 68 requires the recognition of the county's proportionate share of their net pension liability. You've probably seen some literature or verbiage on that in the past couple of years. And so this is a pretty sizable adjustment, and it is a retroactive adjustment. And what we did, along with the county's assistance and the TCD RS and their actuary all together, determined at the beginning of the year, which was October 1, 2014, what the net effect was of that pension liability. And we recorded that as what we call a prior period adjustment. So that did not affect the current year revenue or expenditures. That adjustment to net position or retained earnings to the county was almost $9 million that was basically reclassified from net position or net assets to net pension liability. So it's basically a balance sheet reclassification.
So is that just a general entry change?
It is. A glorified general entry, yes, ma'am. On page 12 is the statement of net position. This is basically the entire balance sheet of the county. And I know when you guys are holding your meetings, you typically look at the budgetary type presentation. And that is also presented in this report. But a number of years ago, GASB 34 was implemented, which required that governments recognize their capital assets and their debt on their financial statements, just like a regular business would. And this statement is basically what is doing that. The total assets for the county at the end of the year was $108 million. Cash and investments at the very top of the page of $12 and almost $20 million, together aggregate, that is an increase of about $1.1 million over the prior year. Most of the other asset categories and liability categories were fairly consistent year over In the liability section, it is noteworthy to say there was no new debt issued in the year ended 9/30/2015. Now, I know there was a big bond issue just this year in February, but that's not reflected in these statements. Right there in the middle of the page where it says total liabilities of $22 million, it goes up one line, that $12.4 million, that net pension liability, that's the big, again, the biggest difference between last year's and this year's financial statements is that $12 million was not on last year's financial statements. Or it actually was, it was just way down into in the net asset or the net position section. So overall, net position had a decrease of about $6.3 million and ended the year at just under $90 million. But again, that net decrease included that prior period restatement of almost $9 million. So let's look at the activity for the county on the next page, on page 13. And this is a very, I've never really liked the presentation of this, but this is the prescribed form that the GASB requires the statement of activities be in, convoluted as it is. The far left side of the statement of activities states the expenses of the government for the year, and it's by governmental functions such as judicial, public safety, corrections, et cetera. Overall expenses were actually down about $1.2 million year over year. And then the revenue that is generated by those governmental activities is in the next three columns. The general revenue, right there in the middle of the page, the general revenues, obviously the biggest general revenue for the county is property taxes, sales tax, et cetera. Property taxes of 40, almost $42 million for general purposes and just over $2 million for debt service purposes. Overall general revenues of $45 million is an increase of about $1.2 million year over year. So we had an increase in revenues and a decrease in expenses. So the change in net position, which is the fourth number from the bottom, that's basically the net income for the county for the year, and that is $2.5 million positive net income. And then we have our beginning net assets, and that prior period adjustment that we've already talked about, which was about $8.9 million, that's a deduct or subtraction to arrive at the net position at the end of the year of just under $90 million, which ties back to the statement of net position. The next page, page 14, is the actual balance sheet of the governmental funds. And this is probably a little bit more familiar if you're looking at governmental accounting with what you're used to looking at. The General Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, those are the county's major funds for the year as calculated under GASB's requirements for major funds. The third column is the other governmental funds, and this is a column that actually summarizes several, I don't know how many, but maybe 20, 25 total funds. Special revenue funds, like registry funds, law, library, road, a bridge, those type of funds, as well as debt service funds. There are schedules in the back that actually summarize those funds together, and they tie back to this column. The total assets of the General Fund at the end of the year, at 9/30/2015, stood at just over $20 million, 20.3. Total assets for the county, and again, this is governmental, this doesn't include your capital assets, it does not include your debt, it's basically a budgetary type basis accounting or fund accounting. Total assets of 35, almost $36 million is an increase of $1.5 million over the prior Liabilities includes accounts payable and accrued expenses, fairly consistent year over year. There was actually a small, about a $400,000 increase in liabilities primarily due to timing of when the bills were paid. Deferred inflows of resources, that's a fancy way of saying deferred revenue, and that's basically has to do with your property taxes and your fines and fees receivable. What the county does not expect to collect within the first 60 days or 90 days, that actually has to be deferred in the fund financial statements, which is a large percentage, actually, especially with the fines and fees receivable. So the total fund balance for the General Fund of $17 million, and overall, for all the funds, excuse me, just over 30, just under $32 million, fund balance increased about $1.1 million. And that's demonstrated two pages over on page 16, the net change in fund balance of $1.1 million. The General Fund actually had a net loss for the year of about $660,000. There was more capital outlay in the General Fund this year, and there was also more transfers out of the General Fund into the Capital Projects Fund and other funds, primarily the Capital Projects Fund. Those are the basic financial statements without drilling down into too much detail. Very briefly, page 18 is the statement of net position for the Internal Service Fund. This is the, this is the insurance fund. This is where the premiums that are collected is shown as revenues, and the claims that are paid out are shown as expenses. There was an actual, there was an operating income this year of about $229,000 in that fund. After collecting about $5.3 million in insurance premiums and paying out about $4 million in claims, altogether expenses of about $5.3 million. There are a lot of other components to this report, and I'm not going to get into the notes right now. Carrie has my card, and, you know, if any of you ever have any questions after I leave or if you look more closely... in claims, altogether expenses of about $5.3 million. There are a lot of other components to this report, and I'm not going to get into the notes right now. Carrie has my card, and you know, if any of you ever have any questions after I leave or if you look more closely, I am happy to answer questions over the phone or by email at any time. The biggest change this year obviously was implementation of GASB 68. It was a big implementation. Potter County's not alone though. I mean, all governments had to implement that.
But an additional $1.2 million to the fund balance. Respectfully, was that exactly expected?
That's all, all funds. The general fund had a reduction, but all funds have the $1.2.
So the general fund had a reduction in some segment?
Of $660,000.
Carrie, what do you think caused that reduction?
Excuse me?
Into the reduction of the general fund of $600,000 into the fund balance, what do you think caused that? Just overall general expense spending?
Part of it was, we had grant expenditures, but we have not yet received the grant proceeds.
Okay.
And that was probably $230,000 of it. And then we did transfer more out to other funds, courthouse security fund, capital projects
And then you mentioned the $6.3 million decrease in net position and some of these journal entry kind of changes. How does that affect, and maybe the answer is not at all, but how does that affect the overall financial position as it relates to bond ratings? Not at all? Okay.
Potter County, I mean, is in a very healthy financial position compared to a lot of governments we see. It's very healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I do want to give a quick shout out and a thank you to Carrie and her staff. I've worked with her for several years and she's just outstanding to work with. We really enjoy working with her, and she's incredibly assist us with the audit. It's a long process. We began the audit actually, I think usually in the first week of October with the week of interim work, and we do most of our actual field work in December. And then the writing report is usually done after the first of the year and all the review is done. So it's a long process, and she does a wonderful job, as well as other offices within the county, the county treasurer's office, obviously we're in there looking at bank statements, et cetera. So my thanks to the county for their help and support of our process.
Thank you. That would be why you didn't award it to your county.
Yes, in large part due to our auditor stuff.
Thank you. All right, so that's so recognized. Number six, the insurance report to recognize insurance fund report. Okay, is there anything unusual we need to talk about on the night?
Good morning.
Good morning.
There is not anything unusual on the report. However, I did want to make you aware that I've been in conversation with Leigh Anne in the treasurer's office about potential investment options that the county has for best placing the funds that we have in this operating account. And if you'll remember, back in October of 2012, we moved $500,000 from Texas School for this insurance account into the Emerald National portion of that account because it was a better investing opportunity, investment opportunity, had better returns at that time. Through these conversations with Leigh Anne over the past couple of weeks and the addition of Texas Class, Texas Class is offering 56 right now, and Emerald National is up to 39. So a move to Texas Class would be a substantial increase in return on investment for this account. So on Friday, Leigh Anne did initialize a request to move $750,000 into Texas Class, and that will leave 578,990 in the Emerald National account. Texas Class offers an extremely liquid account where we can access those funds within a matter of hours or half a day. So if we see claims coming in that are larger than expected, we can very quickly access whatever funds are needed and roll it back into Emerald National to cover those funds. So it was a decision that was supported by Leigh Anne and advised by her as well to move those monies to allow for stronger investment. You'll see that move here on the insurance report, the first court of May, it should show. And there will be a line item on the report to show Texas Class.
Okay, thank you. While you're still here, number seven is employee retirement options, educational presentations to provide an update on provision of educational programs for employees regarding retirement options.
Yes, last commissioners' court, I was provided information for Shane Hall, to contact him, and I tried to set up an educational presentation for our employees related to the advantages of early participation in optional retirement or deferred comp retirement plans. I did reach out to Mr. Hall by email March 17th and have received no response to date. However, I wanted to let you know that we do have our toilette with CBA, our current third-party advisor of deferred comp plans, scheduled to come in on May 19th to provide an educational presentation to our employees. We'll put out a notice to employees via email and also in the May newsletter regarding that. And then we've also confirmed with TCD RS to come in on June 1st and June 2nd to also speak to our employees about TCD RS specific issues and provide one-on-one meetings with employees as requested.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, fire station number five, to hear a report on the damage to fire station number five and take any action necessary.
So before you guys start, just to let everyone here in the room know, the fire department on Willow Creek caught fire about two weeks ago. Now, that sounds silly, I know, but it happens. And so they are here today to tell us what's going on with that, what we are doing about that, and choose to give us a report. So Richard.
And basically, that's why we're here, just to kind of update y'all on where we're at. My kid has been instrumental in getting everything set up and going for us. At this time, we have a portable office building brought in that should be operational today or tomorrow, and we hope to have administrative offices up and going at that time. Currently, they're working through the cleanup on the building. There was quite a bit of damage to the building. So at this time, we don't have a lot of information, we don't have a lot of figures, and I wanted to be able to answer any questions that the commissioners' court might have, so we make sure everybody's on the same page.
Chief is there? I'm sorry.
Just keeping in mind that we're still in the recovery phase, so we're still, as the chief and assistant chief and the staff are gathering all the information to ensure that we dot all the i's and puzzle all t's prior to bringing anything back in this court. And I think they're moving in a very methodical way, but we just want to keep that in mind. We don't have all the numbers, we don't have all the figures at this point, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we're still in a recovery mode.
Well, first, just thankfully you're safe, and so I'm glad that you're here, and thank you for your endeavors. But as it relates to what caused the fire and the investigation, is there any feedback yet, or is that still? I don't know what the timeline is.
As to the cause of the fire, because it's kind of conflict for us to investigate our own fire, we called in the state fire marshal. And he looked at it that night, his ruling was undetermined, which as you get further into knowledge of investigating fires, it's not uncommon to have an undetermined determination made on your fire. When the insurance adjuster came to the building at that time, I did look at the fire with him to make sure that nothing was in conflict. And the only thing I can tell you that we found is we had electrical faults throughout the building. They probably started earlier in the day, and we found different places where there was electrical faults or arcing within wiring, light ballast, and other things. So to be able to say they happened before, during, or after the fire without scientific data, the back data, the ruling will stay undetermined. But the fire started in the attic space, so we can't determine whether it was weather-related because it snowed that morning, we can't determine if it's rodent-related, that we've had a mouse problem in that building for a while with the, you know, they could have chewed into the wires or something. There's a lot of those things that we could not determine. So at this time, it's going to be an undetermined fire, but it's excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, guys, thank you so much. Okay, number 10, criminal justice needs assessment. To consider and act upon selecting a court group to work with TAC representatives to determine the scope for TAC to provide an evaluation of the Potter County Criminal Justice System. Recommended members are sheriff, district attorney, county attorney, district judge, CSCD, and a commissioner.
Commissioner Vaughn. This basically is just to highlight and review the systematic path forward for our judicial system, the totality. I think there was an opportunity back in 2013 that I was not necessarily aware of at that time, and I thought it was a missed opportunity. But regardless of that, TAC provides an assessment of our judicial system, and basically Carrie did an excellent job of researching this. I just want to read just a quick paragraph in respect to what we're basically looking for. And it is to, TAC meets with our officials, choice to flow through the system, conducts interviews with those within the process, and prepares a gap analysis. Once that is complete, they meet with the officials again, present the findings, share some best practices that fit our needs, identify ballistics, and provide guidance on how to flow through and with continued awareness to keep our jail population at normal. I think they've done an excellent job as far as decreasing the population in our jails, and certainly in respect to misdemeanors and the felonies, it's not so apparent as it once was. And I think that crosses the nation, and I think it's a bipartisan effect in regards to all of that. But I do believe that we can get ahead of the curve, if you would, in identifying and looking as we move forward on anything that might occur, that might be a problem and a hidden for us to look at. These will be co-appointed attorneys, and it's been my desire and aspiration that we look more specifically into a public defender's category as far as the county. And I know that's what higher end on economically, but on the fifth side, we look at more of a quality equal amount of justice as being presented, my thoughts. And so those are just some of the things that we can look at, and I think to have all of the representatives of the parent to list that and move forward in a way that certainly will enhance this county moving forward in our judicial system.
Okay, I have, I got an email from a county career law judge saying that she would like to be on the committee also. I'm sure that there are probably other people that would like to be on here. Do you want to discuss this now, Commissioner, or do you want to appoint a committee and then?
Basically, I just wanted to broach it out to the court now and to those within the county to look at that, be going in, maybe have some discussions, and yet the next session, we'd be able to look at whether we prepare with that and move forward and select a committee.
Okay, so the committee members that are listed here, do you want them all to be on there?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so you want to pass this until next time?
I have a question. What really brought this to the forefront? What's the problem that we're trying to solve?
We're basically looking at, oh, no system is perfect. And I believe that we've done an excellent job the last few years of ensuring more legal justice as far as, in certain respect to misdemeanors. I know that there was some political heightening hysteria that was presenting. Regardless of that, there was some notable concerns and questions that I think that we need to be addressed, and by being as transparent as we can and presenting that moving forward, that I think addresses all those issues that are some concerns that are.
Commissioner Vaughn, do you think this might be something we want to take up in an executive session?
I'm not sure. I don't know that this, I don't know this is something that we could discuss in the executive system. I'm sitting here now, I can't think of an exception that I could fit it into for you.
Okay, just a thought.
Okay, so you want to, I'm sorry, you want to just go ahead and wait till next time to discuss it further, or do you want to have the people that are on here get with you and discuss it more?
I'm going to be getting with all those folks.
Okay, so we'll just pass it.
Just wanted to present that out as an inquiry on the FBI, and then the next session, be able to liberate and compare it both of them.
Okay, we will pass that for the next meeting. Okay, number 11, unclaimed capital credits. We did this last year. We get this every year from the state showing us how much money that they will allow us if we request it. It says to consider and act upon requesting unclaimed capital credits and designate a community or economic development use for such funds as authorized by Section 74.602 of the Texas Property Code. So I want to continue to give money to the, say, Snack Pack for Kids.
Do we know how much money there is?
I don't, we don't know yet. We won't know until we submit our, yeah.
So refreshing my memory, who do we have that we're listing up besides?
Last year, we gave money to Bowie, we meant a sixth grade or middle school, and also Snack Pack. And I just think Snack Pack is an important program. I hate to see kids go hungry, and I guess that's my choice, y'all pick something else.
Judge, do we have to pick today, or is it possible to know?
No, no, we don't have to pick today.
Once we know the dollar amount, we can think on any potential recommendations and then vet that out, correct?
Perfect. So I just want this to be on there for your concern, y'all think about it, bring it back next time, and we'll pick two, maybe three.
You need a motion, Judge?
I wouldn't.
Let's pass it.
Okay, I just didn't know if you needed one to apply for it.
Okay. We've got enough time. When is the deadline, Carrie?
Well, we won't know the dollar amount until after we get, after the application's in and it's been allocated.
But there's a deadline for the application.
And I don't believe that we have to have a motion.
Okay, okay, just say it. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Number 14, local government corporation to provide an update on the local government corporation, Commissioner.
The LGC met on April 6th, and there was a lot of discussion as it relates to financing. But, you know, I put this agenda item on every time we meet to make sure the court is fully aware of discussions. But the parking garage project remains on schedule, the hotel remains on schedule, they had what they called a topping out ceremony, I think it was yesterday at 4:30 PM, and it's as it relates to the still work that has been completed on the hotel. So you'll see some of that development downtown. We are also expecting, the LGC is expecting the final report from BND, and that is the third-party group that did the assessment as it relates to a potential ball field and being able to accommodate a particular ball team. So the same content, but it will be more in presentation and bound material. So as that comes in, I always request a copy, even if it's electronic, to send to the court so you have that final presentation for your records. We talked a lot about in the meeting as it relates to the MPEV, the downtown ball field financing plan. In the last public meeting, it was announced roughly $48 million. Think when it originally went out to vote was $32 million, and after this analysis, the presentation- the presentation was $48 million. What Bob Cowell and Terry Childers, city manager and assistant city manager, shared with the LGC was they had taken that number, reviewed what they could manage in-house, in particular the project management of the construction work, and they brought that dollar amount to $44 million. So their thought is they have enough in-house expertise to manage pieces of the project, so bringing that to $44 million. Michelle presented, Michelle Bonner presented to the LGC about, how do you pay for this difference now? Because originally, it was $32 million. And the idea was that it would come from the hot tax, the hotel tax. And so part of that is the hotel tax still, that's a big part of how to pay for this. They also discussed issuing COs, certificates of obligation, for a downtown PID. And we don't do a lot of those as a city. I think we have a handful. I know Greenways has one. I'm trying to think of a few developments. The downtown PID does not exist today, so this is not in existence. They would have to go to the property owners and make sure that everybody wants to sign up for the PID. And they essentially pay a little bit of an extra tax rate so that they can, and those dollars get allocated to this PID. That's how the PID works. But they feel like there's overall good buy-in from the business owners because obviously those property values downtown shouldn't this all happen or slated to increase. They're also allocating some of the hot tax that was slated for Center City Improvement Funds, which was new. And so I really brought it for discussion as it relates to the COs, because those are property taxes. And Dr. Matney was in the audience in the Vote for Amarillo kind of campaign. I reminded them that the message to the voters was, we won't use your local dollars. This is hotel dollars. These are people that are predominantly passing through town, and that's how this is going to get funded. And so it's not a big dollar amount. What's slated is roughly $1.4 million as it relates to the big hotel. The hot tax is $36 million. But I felt like we have an added diligence to educate the public if that has now changed because it went to a vote and we said, no local tax dollars. So even if it was $1, I guess my feeling is we would still have that responsibility to educate them to say this is now part of the funding stream. I also reminded as it relates to the vote, or at least I heard a lot of discord about Center City, or, I'm sorry, Civic Center, not Center City, Civic Center, and what is slated to happen with that? What are the development efforts? And so Terry indicated that that is being reviewed by the council in terms of a strategic plan and what that might look like. So I think that might be a bigger project, he indicated, would be a bigger project than what these hotel tax would fund, kind of in the long stream. So I don't know if that's a potential bond down the road. I have no idea. I certainly don't want to assume and speak for the city, but I did bring that up. And then I also reminded them about the committee, their Community Outreach and Engagement Committee. So I gave a list of names that several had also provided. I know that Commissioner Kelly also provided a name, and so I just reminded the group, the exec committee, that we have people willing to serve and to make sure that the community and all areas of our community are educated on what's happening. So that was discussed. And then as it relates to the parking garage, so we talked about paid parking in Amarillo, which doesn't exist today. And so one of my questions was, is the city council now starting to have those discussions? What will that look like? Because when this parking garage gets built, it will be paid parking. And you know, Potter County has 150 slots that we've already paid for in the construction piece, so we won't be paying this year to year for 25 years, I think, is our contract. So paid parking. And then as it relates to street parking, so one of my questions is obviously, our district court parking lot is flat surface parking, and it's the taxpayers. They park there for free all day throughout the day if there's something going on downtown. I know that's a parking lot that's used quite often. And so what that means to this commission, I certainly can't speak to, but I know that paid parking is something that's going to be evaluated, at least as it relates to the pro forma for the parking garage. Their revenue is based on paid parking. So I wanted to just bring those up more again as an FYI, that that continues to be discussed at the LGC, will meet as scheduled. If any of you have any questions, I do my best to gather any documents they provide and send those to you. If there's anything you'd like me to ask on your behalf, I'm happy to do so too. That's my update, Judge.
Would you please explain to these students what a PID is?
A proper, oh, I'm going to Google it. Property Improvement District? Now I'm going to have to double check myself. I think it's the Property Improvement District. But basically what it is, so think of Greenways as the example I always use. So those property owners in that district, they can sign up and say, make my property taxes a little higher, which no one really does that. No one says make them higher. They can sign up to make their property taxes higher, and when they do that difference, they allocate in a special fund. A lot of them have boards, just like this, or councils like this, and they can allocate how to use those funds. So sometimes you go into residential livings and residential half houses and you see waterfalls or you see these big park spaces or grand things when you walk in, like at the center when you drive in and you're walking around. A lot of times, those are paid for by PIDs and not just your normal city kind of tax revenue. So that's what a PID is. And I'll double check with the acronym.
All right, thank you very much. Number 15. Neighborhood planning. Provide an update on the city, county, neighborhood planning process. I had a conflict and could not go to this meeting, so I will let you talk about it.
Yeah, this was just more of an FYI. The big public meeting is this Thursday, and it's at the Amarillo United Citizens Forum at 901 North Hayden from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So for the students in the audience, I encourage you guys to attend this. This is a new initiative from the city, what they call their Neighborhood Planning Initiative. So this is the city and the county working together. We put dollars together to say, how do we add more visibility and development opportunities to areas of our city that maybe don't get it all the time? So the first one slated is North Heights, and there's a whole committee and people that live there that are being a part of, what do they want this area to look like? And it would be just like what you would think of, sidewalks, trash being picked up, cleanliness of the environment, all the basics. And so we're going to get a big public presentation of what did the committee see? What do they want this to kind of go in terms of the future? The next location in that area is in Commissioner Vaughn's precinct. And so Commissioner Vaughn and Judge Tanner and I are all, you know, really watching these topics pretty closely and attend these public meetings. The next one slated is in the Vadio, so East Amarillo. And so we're doing a lot of this kind of groundwork to understand how it happens. So we always, always need student and youth participation. If you ever feel like you would like to learn about some of this, know there are some opportunities. And I can't tell you how many meetings we're all in that we say, what do the students think? Or what, I mean, you're the future. So if you would like to be a part of this, certainly feel free to come and learn and ask questions. But it is for North Heights is the first neighborhood initiative, and then the second one slated to kind of start early summer timeline will be in the Vadio. Judge, don't know if you want to add anything to the background on that. Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
I'll just put my two bits in as always. For students, don't expect the government to do all your work for you. We ought to, as citizens, see what needs to be done and take care of ourselves. So that's just my two bits on this project.
And Commissioner Church did it on the head, but also I'll remember that your tax dollars that you still and pay to the government have a responsibility for the total community to enhancement, not just in things that you individually can do or your neighbors can do, but also to employ opportunity for developers, entrepreneurs, contractors, to help in enhancing the area that has been so long blocked.
All right.
Judge, this might be a good time, maybe to take a break because we've got a lot of squatters out there, and this is so riveting to our students that maybe we need to take a little 10-minute break.
10-minute break, everybody? Okay, stand up.
of.
The opinion carries are always on the record.
Okay, let's get back to business here. Everybody back on the stage. Everybody sit down. Everybody back on the stage, everybody sit down. All right. I think number 16, the Potter County Projects, Nick, Mike, you're not going to do the project report, right? Okay, Mike's out of town, so we're going to skip over that till next time. Number 17, chiller maintenance, maintenance, to consider an act upon approving an agreement for chiller maintenance at the Santa Fe Building with TD Industries, Inc., in the amount of $13,762, quarterly payments of $3,440.50 from TCPN corporate contract, number R150501-TX-9611, effective April 1, 2016 through March 31, 2017, funds currently budgeted. Hi, Nick.
Good morning. So this is the chiller maintenance here at the Santa Fe Building. It does include the two new air-cooled chillers that were installed last year, which previous contract did not include. It was just the two water-cooled chillers. Same company we've had the last three or four years.
That's what I thought, same, same company, continuation of their services to us.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, yeah. If we have any sort of equipment that they are not certified on, they send it to get factory trained on. Help us out numerous times.
Okay. Any questions? Need a motion and a second, please.
I move that we approve the agreement for the chiller maintenance at Santa Fe Building with TD Industries Incorporated in the amount of $13,762, quarterly payments of $3,440.50 from TCPN corporate contract, number R150501-TX-9611, effective date April 1, 2016 through March 31, 2017, and funds currently budgeted.
Okay, okay. Here we go, Kelly. All right, a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Thanks, Nick. Number 18.
Did you open the sign, is this committee sign?
No, I have one.
Okay, okay. Number 18, insurance premiums, to hear a report on insurance premiums from insurance agent Steve Lapp to recognize and approve payment of invoices. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. Yes, good morning, Commissioner. As you probably remember, our insurance comes, all of our casualty insurance comes due on April 30, and our property insurance comes due on July 1. So we've had, the property insurance is not an item that can be moved, it's a group purchasing program with TAC. So that leaves us in a little bit of a difficult position on our casualty business this year. We were planning on going out for an RFP for all of these coverages that you see before you, but it leaves us in a little bit of a tough spot. If we, if we go out for our casualty and we can't, and we find something better, you know, we really can't move because we've got the property hanging out there, which is really the bigger portion of the, of the coverage. So what I'm recommending is to, is to renew all of these coverages from April 30 to July 1, to be a common effective date with our property insurance, and then in July of 17, going out for an RFP. The last time we went out for an RFP was in 2013. Since then, we've been dealing with considerable property claim issues, so we felt it best not to, not to disrupt that. We look forward to probably having the tri-state roof situation done before November 1 is kind of our deadline, so we're pushing, pushing forward with that, so. So what you see for right now is to renew all our coverages except for the tank pollution liability from April 30, 2016, to 7-1, 2016, just a 60-day period, and then I'll be back in June with the property and the casualty annual renewal that'll get us through till 7-1, 2017. The, both the crime and the tank pollution liability will be extended till 7-1, 2017.
So Steve, is that why the amounts on the premiums, they look prorated? I mean, it's a complete difference in terms of premium amounts, I thought there were typos.
It's 61 days, yes.
Okay. I thought, well, that's a good policy. Why would we, let's sign up for a whole year. Okay.
Okay. I make a. No questions, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the insurance premiums as presented for renewal period of April 30, 2016 through April 1, I'm sorry, through July 16, and for crime and tank pollution to extend from April 30, 2016 through July 1, 2017.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Number 19, formal bid renewal, to consider an act upon renewing formal bid number 1087-14, painting and surface refinish services with Palmer Painting Company for an additional one-year term from May 1, 2016 through April 30, 2017. Pricing is unchanged from the previous contract term.
Yes, I was told that this was up for renewal and that there was no issues on the current contract, that we're just renewing this with no price change.
Everybody's good, as far as I know. Nick's got a thumbs up over there.
Yeah, I see his email.
Okay, need a motion and a second on this. Okay, we've got Commissioner Kelly.
Second.
And Commissioner Church, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Number 20, vehicle transfers, to consider an act upon the transfer of vehicles between various departments as follows. You'll remember last meeting, we had three vehicles that were being transferred. One of them specifically was Constable number four, and it was a horrible vehicle. We were wondering why they were, somebody else was getting it. Well, it turns out it was that match, so it's going straight to auction.
Okay.
For somebody else to pick up and sell for parts or whatever. So these particular vehicles are Potter County Vehicle number 18748, 2008 Ford Explorer, from auction to purchasing, and Potter County number 16224, 2003 Ford Expedition, from purchasing to auction. So, so anything you want to talk about on that vehicle?
It's just, it's an upgrade for us. Matt Johnson's here, if he have any particulars on it, he's our buyer and oversees the auction. It's just an upgrade from 2003 to 2008 for us, so we're just taking the opportunity to get a more improved, much-needed vehicle.
Is that the one that came from the sheriff's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you sheriff for offering those, lost you in the audience, but thank you for that, because we definitely questioned JP4's vehicle.
JP4 or Constable?
I'm sorry, Constable.
Okay, I need a motion and a second.
I move we approve the transfer of the two vehicles stated in our agenda.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Employment items, to consider an act upon the following employment items in the maintenance facilities department, the hiring of Angela Rhodes Garcia as a replacement for Leah Race, effective April 1, 2016, the hiring of Darla Moe Johnson as a replacement for Esther Scheller, custodian one, effective April 1, 2016, the hiring of Carolyn Solis as a replacement for Wanda Mae Nelson, custodian one, effective April 1, 2016, and the hiring of Quentin Sean Stewart as a replacement for Nick Leathers, groundskeeper one, effective April 16, 2016. Need a motion and a second on this one, please.
Move the approval of the hiring listed on the agenda.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. The jail report today, we have 496 people in our jail, and 89 of those are female, we have zero in children's. The felony ratio is 81%, as to the misdemeanor is 13%. Do we have any county insurance items?
No, we do not.
Okay. No executive session, agenda items for next time, we're going to discuss that.
Yeah, next quarter.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Judge, for future agenda items, just a quick question for Dave, as it relates to the Apalooza Hills unit, I did see your email that you were going to get back with the citizens, what's the next step on that? Are we expecting that in the next agenda?
It will not, you have to have a public's notice.
Okay.
Of the hearing, which is 30 days, that was published last week.
Okay.
So the public hearing I'll have will be first meeting.
First meeting in a minute.
So you're waiting until you're gone?
Right. Exactly.
You really are waiting until you're gone.
I didn't, I didn't plan it that way.
He wasn't born, no, but not last night.
Okay.
Okay, before we adjourn, and before we take questions from everybody, I have a letter that I got, and I'm going to do a little bragging on Caprock here for a second. And it's not because they're my alma mater, but it's because they are my alma mater. So I got a letter from Delt Cockrell, okay? I don't know who that is, but.
He's a, isn't he a coach, the track coach?
Okay, okay. And he wanted to let me know of the accomplishments of the track, are you on the track team, young man? You're not, okay, okay, I was just wondering. Because of your Texas Tech shirt, I was just curious. Okay. Anyway, being a graduate in Potter, that's probably why he sent it to me, because I graduated from Caprock, but he wanted me to know some of the accomplishments that the track team made in 2015, and also this current year. I'm just going to tell you what he said. In the Amarillo Relays, Caprock set a record in the 800 meter relay, first time in Caprock history. Lubbock Invitational, Caprock won, first time in school history. Caprock was also district champions, first time in the history of Caprock. Area champions, they won every event and made school history again. Regional champions, won 800 meter, the long jump, 800 relay, the 200 meter race, shot putt, and also the discus. School history was made again. The state track meet, nine kids went, six of them were juniors, which will be back this year, which I'm assuming they're out, and some of you may be in the army. They won state champion in long jump, first time in school history. In 2015, two of those seniors signed full scholarships for track and field. And then this year, one Longhorn has already signed with Texas Tech on a full-track scholarship. So I just wanted to. It was you, huh? Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to recognize them and, and just give them, give them some recognition that they deserve, and give them a round of applause, just to. Okay, so now we come to the questions. We have any questions or?
Jason.
No questions?
There's no questions on the Twitter?
There's no Twitter questions, but we'll pull from a couple from last year, all these guys get warmed up, I guess.
Type a question on Twitter.
If anybody would, okay. If anybody would really go to the podium and respond to you.
Yes, you're allowed to use your phones here. There you go, we'll start with that. So one question we had from last year is, what are the qualifications for being elected to the court? So we'll start with that.
I guess I was one that just recently went through the election and had an opponent. Really, I guess you have to be of voting age, number one. Have to be registered to vote. Probably helps to know a little bit about your community, but you don't have to. I could say that about my opponent, but, but anyway, the, then you have to pay a fee in order to get on the ballot. And to be a county commissioner, it costs $750 to get your name included on the ballot. And then, of course, the best thing to do is get out and campaign, meet your clients or your people who live in your community, and there's lots of ways to do that. Of course, you can go to the elections administrator and get a list of all the people who voted in the past, how many ever elections you want to go back to. But a good thing to do is get out, burn up a little shoe leather, walk, walk your precinct and meet folks and ask for their vote. People like to have you ask them for your vote, so.
One thing that the commissioner mentioned was your precinct. Unlike the county, city council, we have different precincts, on precinct one, two, three, and four down the line. The city council are elected at large, so anyway, they can live anywhere in the city, but you have to live in the precinct if you're running for, when you run for county office.
And there's only a few, a few elected officials that have to do that. Commissioners are one, JPs are one, and constables. Everyone else, all the other elected officials are countywide. When I ran, I had four opponents, and it was countywide, so I did a lot of leather burning to walk the streets.
Well, and in Texas, too, every county is set up the same way. So there's 254 counties in Texas, and it doesn't matter, population, if it's a very, very small county or a very, very big county, so think of Dallas County, think of, you know, those area, metro areas, they're set up the same way, four commissioners and a county judge that presides, and they have to, you have to live, certainly as Commissioner Kelly said, live in that district or precinct that you're trying to get elected into.
I think they nailed it real well, and just add, add an additive, it's just you have to, you need a passion of wanting to be a servant of the populace, and it favors you very well to do that, and other than that, I think that probably is a good layout.
Hope that answers it, yeah, but I think there should be.
Yes, my question had to do with the Amarillo Cultural District thing from earlier. So what exactly qualifies as a cultural asset? Would, would you, would any of you be able to answer what the lady that was talking about earlier have to come up?
Yeah, Ben has left.
I think it lays it out in the, the record that she had.
It's arts and culture, and basically, the way I understand it, Judge, you went to some of those meetings, you probably understand. Because it's center city, center city that is applying for this, they tried to look for things that was really had to do more with the arts, and of course, the culture was with, as I understand it, more the architecture of what made this city what it looks like, and that sort of thing.
There's a lot, a lot, lot of art involved in it. There are so many, Chancet Center has a one huge room that an art teacher, you can go out there and take art classes, and that thing is full of art that people do, all kinds of art, paintings, sculptures, whatever, so it's out there. So we're going to, she wanted to make a district specific for Amarillo, not just, not just Potter County, I think it was Clayton Randall also, so. Maybe it's not, maybe it's all Potter, let me check them out. Of Amarillo College, that's in, that's in Randall County. But that, that probably does not answer your question.
Well, there's a little paragraph in here, Judge, too, it says, "Cultural districts highlight heritage and cultural, everything from visual and performing art to food and architecture." And she mentioned an inventory list that's going to be sent with the application, and that was the question I had asked, is once she gets ready for the application, it would be great to have that inventory list, so we know kind of what qualified, and then if we have ideas of other things that should be included, you have something to kind of compare it to.
Right, and the reason I ask this is because the, it seems like kind of a investment in our community, right? So we would want to invest it in places that need a little bit more money, probably, right?
And it, and it also enhances the, the key word is culture, because Amarillo is a very diversified community, and certainly focused on the numerous cultures that we have within our borders. Yes?
For designation as a cultural district must it be a single unified? For designation as a cultural district, must it be a single unified area? So for example, if you were to have the regular tracks, must you add a roadway to those regular tracks or is it still a unified district?
One of the points Beth made in her presentation was walkability was a big piece of the application process. So that would lead me to believe that it's a continuous kind of map versus different plots kind of all over the city, but I think that would be a good follow-up question for Beth. But I know she mentioned walkability and transportation as a part of the application process.
And driveability.
Driveability.
They wanted to highlight not only the arts, but also the hometown restaurants, the mom and pop stores and things like that, like you see on Sixth Street, basically, just home on stuff. Anything else?
Jason. Yeah, Jason has something.
Previously, we heard about the amount of people in jails in Potter County. It was somewhere around 450, might hold the share.
Yes, well, I like it.
The sheriff.
496.
496, so about 500. She said how much money it takes to have her person.
Sheriff, the latest statistic of how much it costs us to house an inmate per day, I use $52 still, is that still accurate?
56.
$56 a day. So the number that was shared was 496 inmates, male, and 89 female. So those are people that are in trouble for different reasons sitting at our Potter County jail. And as a taxpayer, that costs you $56 per day.
That's just the basics.
And that's the basics. And I'm looking at the sheriff to keep me honest here. Yep.
So being diagnosed with a lot of money, how can the city of Amarillo and Potter County reduce crime rates as to allocate more money from jails to more destructive events?
Excellent question.
Good question. Sheriff.
Excellent question. And that will be some of the plans that we'll be discussing.
Yeah, we will be discussing it. I, for one, let me just say. Ask him again.
I want to know, how can the city of Amarillo and Potter County help prevent crime rates as to reduce the amount of money that is needed for Amarillo and Potter County jails so we can allocate it to more constructive events like prevention and cultural events in the city and the county?
Well, we try to be as proactive as we can. We get all the deputies that are out working the streets, we put them in the neighborhoods, try to reduce our burglaries and thefts that are happening out in the county. We also are very instrumental, you have the DA here from where, all the way to the back, Randall County.
He's helping a lot.
But he started, got together, we put together the auto theft task force that was put together to help curtail some of the thefts of our auto burglaries and also our car thefts. So we're being proactive as we can, but then again, to put more people on the streets costs money as well. But we try to use what we have and try to put, get them out, curtail the crime before it happens.
Sheriff, what percentage of the people incarcerated are there because of a drug-related problem?
Well, I can, and I don't know that I can give you the exact figure, but of the 496 that are in jail, I would say that probably 80 to 85 percent of those are some kind of drug-related. And whether it's a theft or whether it's a burglary, they're committing those crimes because they have some kind of addiction that they're trying to fulfill.
And I'm going to take that even a step further. I'm going to say, because of my expertise, that out of the 80 percent that are there on drugs, I would say 35 to 40 percent are had mental health issues, maybe more.
Well, we have several people that are in jail that don't, they don't need to be in jail.
No. And let me just talk about that for a second.
And in my opinion, and I think the judge will stand with me on this, there are some that have mental issues because they've used narcotics or they have some kind of a substance abuse. And those are people that we try to get help as well. Sometimes they need to be in jail. But we also have some that are out there that have actual mental issues, schizophrenia, bipolar, those kind of things. Those people don't need to be in jail, they need to be having some kind of medical help and we cannot provide that in our jail.
And so, to that end, I have started a mental health court where I go to the jail every Monday afternoon. And we have a team of people out there who draw these people out from the jail and they come into this little courtroom we've made up, video room, and we talk to them and we see if we can help them. Because here's the problem, they are mentally ill, they are on medication, they don't like to take their medication because it makes them feel weird, so they start taking street drugs instead because they feel better taking those. So it's a problem and the sheriff will agree with me on this too. It's a huge problem. We can't get them to take their medication and stay out of jail. They are put in jail for misdemeanors such as criminal trespass or simple assault or whatever. And so they're put in jail because they're hacked off by somebody or whatever, they can't get that cigarette they want from Toot and Totem or whatever. So they're put in jail and they don't need to be there. They do not need to be there. And so that's what I do every Monday afternoon, go out and try to get them out and get them on their program that I've offered them to keep them out of trouble and to get them on the right road. So it's not for lack of trying.
But I think you bring up a good point because I think it's a topic that cities and counties across the state, I mean, Texas certainly catches attention in terms of the number of inmates, if you will. I mean, there's a lot of articles and publications about the business, unfortunately, of the prison system. And a big change that happened in the state of Texas that I in particular was in favor for was the truancy law changes. So this was Senator Whitmire in the Houston area led this effort to decriminalize truancy. And so I think we were one of maybe three states, don't quote me on that stat because I'm coming from memory, one of three states in the entire country that someone could be missing school and eventually have a record because of it. So I know the importance of making sure you guys are in school and all the things that kind of lead into that, but I have found the students that I've worked with in my precinct, there are other issues that are causing them, whether there is no food in the home or there's no parent to take them to school or they're taking care of brothers and sisters, like a lot of very tough things that they're having to deal with. And then on top of that, they have a record kind of because of it. So there was a lot of political conversation, but it passed and that was a big thing for the state of Texas. And so it adds to, there's been a lot of conversation about this pipeline to the prison system is what I've been, I've heard it called, because you're fundamentally putting students in the system, if you will. So truancy brought up a lot of those conversations of how can we be better about it? And I would say as a state, we're definitely looking for ideas of how to help prevent these things and how do you catch students and young students from making these decisions that do affect the rest of their life? So if you have ideas, I think every elected official in this room would be willing to listen to it because it is a very big need in the state, that's for sure. And it's not going to go away. I mean, I think this will be the case 20 years from now.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Assuming commissioners are elected on a parliamentary basis, are you elected on the presidency, the governor, or the president?
President.
Well, it depends.
Absolutely, there's both.
There's both, yeah. Which is different than your city council, because your commissioner's court could never flip 100 percent. We get elected in different cycles. Your city council gets elected on the same calendar, if that's your question.
Precinct, yeah, precinct one and three are on presidential elections. Two, the judge, and four are governors.
The other.
Four are for your term, so.
Jason, you have one?
Yeah, we have one more question come through. Is the commissioners, the judge up there, are you guys full-time positions, full-time employees of the government? Do you have full-time careers outside the government?
I can answer that. I retired from the police department and it's, this is pretty much a full-time job, even though it's not rated as a full-time job. You get a lot of, lots of things that we attend, lots of programs that we put on. Mercy will answer. She puts on a program once a month for her precinct and yeah, it's time-consuming, but it's also worthwhile.
And the commissioners are paid seats, so that is very different in terms of all of the council of government. I think the city council gets $10 a meeting, if I remember correctly. I've heard that a lot in the news lately is where that's coming from. But your county commissioners are paid seats. It depends on the county. Some, I've seen some counties that pay double the salary than your current county commissioner that you see in front of you. But in terms of full-time, I would agree with Commissioner Kelly's comments because this really does take a lot of time. I still do work professionally. I'm a consultant for a software company, but I get to work from home and I get to manage my own schedule. So I don't have to go in at eight and leave at five. So I work pretty late in the evening as they probably get lots of late emails from me, but that's how I make it work because I have flexibility with my employer that I can do what I need to do to be an effective commissioner for me.
As for me, I have a full-time position here and the county judge has, as you heard, I wear many, many hats. And so I'm here every day, eight to five, sometimes until 5:30 or 6:00. And I go to a lot of meetings and give a lot of speeches. So it's a, it's a full-time gig for me.
Sheriff, do you have anything?
I'm retired. No, it's a, it's a part-time position. You can put in as many hours as you like, but basically it's a part-time position.
Same here. I just recently retired from Pantex, 33 years, and basically during that time, tenure, first 10 of that, I lost all of my vacation time because basically I was back and forth from Wayne County and other business. So it does take a lot of time, but it certainly will value and you should get a lot of, a lot of good from it.
And Commissioner Vandere, our most tenured member on this commissioner's court. How many years now?
10 and a half years now.
10 and a half years. He's our most tenured. And Commissioner Kelly, what about you?
Well, this is my, I'll start my third term in January. I just got reelected and I really killed it. Oh, we didn't have a vote, excuse me. So anyway, I got 100 percent of the vote, which is always nice. By the way, I just have a question. Are any of you interested in maybe county government? If you are, stay away from precinct one.
Don't run against him, is what he's saying.
Okay. Any more questions? Anybody?
How do you turn on the mic? Question. Okay. So I know that we have item 15 here, which is the neighborhood planning, which is going to be on this Thursday, correct?
Yes, this Thursday.
I know we have events like that and also events like today, Government Day, but on that recent stadium that was built, I know that would have to do with the city, but I noticed that the population of voting was only 35 percent. So I was wondering, is there any ideas or plans of action that are being considered on how we increase voter turnout, not just with the younger generation, but with just the overall, all generations total? How do we increase voter turnout?
Well, I think Melin could probably answer that the best. One thing I would tell you, Texas does a lot of things well, a lot of things. I love our state. Voting is not one of them. Depending on the survey, we are 48th in terms of the worst voter turnout in the entire country. I know the county has recently passed vote centers to help so you don't have to remember the precinct. You can say, I live in Potter County and show up wherever that is. But Melin, I know certainly has been living and breathing this. She's our elections administrator.
And Mercy basically said what I was going to say. But yes, what we do here is we do what we can to make it as convenient for the voter as possible. A lot of it is, it's really the voter's responsibility. It's a voter's responsibility to find out if they're registered, they live in our county and where they're going to vote, and to get involved. So as a county, our job is to facilitate the voting as efficiently and conveniently as we possibly can. But ultimately, increasing it is a voter's responsibility because it's an option. You know, you're not required to vote. As we're looking towards the presidency, we always take things we did well in the previous election and compare and decide what we can do better. And so there's several things, we're expecting unprecedented turnout on November the 8th. And so you just prepare, prepare, prepare for that. And one thing that we're going to be doing is establishing a phone bank in Potter County so that when people call to say, you know, am I registered to vote? Do I even live in Potter County? Because we get a lot of confusion between Potter and Randall County. And where do I vote? We're going to have a bank of people that can answer those questions that day so we can get as many voters to the polls as we possibly can. The other thing we're doing is we look at ways to alleviate lines and to make lines move faster. And part of that's going to be putting iPads, actually not iPads, tablets at our busiest sites so that we can go into the lines and double-check people before they get to the check-in table. So that we don't have problems like they have in other cities and states. So, but as far as what we're doing is we just look at what we can do to put polling locations where the people are. And that was the big part of the vote centers, was looking at traffic patterns and that kind of thing and trying to locate our polls where people are naturally going.
Melin, how many, what's the percentage? Like you guys would be shocked at the number of few people as a city or a state that really decide who represents you and who makes these decisions. It is very, very few people going to the polls and it'd shock you. But I think that, help me on the percentage of the, the biggest voter in terms of turnout is 55 and over.
That's correct.
And I'm thinking of the percentile, if it's 60 or 75 percent, I can't remember.
In 2012 primary, I think that's the last time I did a, that's one of them that I did a check on and I haven't looked at it for a while, but 80 percent of the voters were over 50 years old.
And what do you expect for this year in terms of the?
Well, we are seeing a younger turnout. With the MPEV, we did have, we did see an increase. In that 2012, we had less than 1 percent of people between 18 and 21 years old vote.
Yes.
Less than 1 percent. It didn't even become a blip. And, you know, but I think that's up to you guys to change that. You know, it's, you're going to get a voter registration card when you go to the tax office. You're eligible to register to vote when you're 17 years, 10 months old. So you don't have to wait till you're 18. You're not registered to vote, you're not eligible to vote till you're 18. But get involved, research the issues, know what's on the ballot, and then get out there and vote because really voting is cultural for the mayor and the parents and the family. If your parents vote, you're more likely to vote. But you can be the adult or the parent that changes that tide. So if you come from a family that never, never helped to vote, it is up to you to make a difference.
Well, and when you think about decisions that are being made that you're going to be paying for, whether it's debt or whatever that is, that's going to, when you grow up, which I can't think, you're all grown already, but when you grow up and you buy a house and you're paying taxes, that's on your shoulders to pay for. So those decisions are being made about the future and the percentage, and this is even, I'm 36, so this is the same for my category. We are not voters traditionally that go to the polls. We struggle with that, my generation struggles with that too. And it's even worse when you look at minorities. Minorities as a whole do not turn to the polls. And the answer, and people always say, well, they're not U.S. citizens. Well, that's not, but the majority of the time, that's not the case, is they don't know how to vote and it doesn't matter how old you get, you're always afraid of what you don't know. And when you don't know what to click on and you don't know what questions to ask, you get very nervous. And so Melin has done a really good job about recording videos of this is what it's like to vote so that as it gets ready for election time, maybe someone sees it and feels a little more comfortable. But it is very much a challenge for this city and for this state and for all generations to really get to the polls and turnout.
What it all boils to, ladies and gentlemen, is singly engagement and responsibility. You have a responsibility. You know, we can, we can style out all the statistics and what else and all the, what Lynn is doing, and she's done an excellent job, but it comes down to your personal responsibility. We live in the greatest country on the face of earth that has ever been. And there are many individuals your age and older that would give up uncomfortable things just for the right, the opportunity to vote. So it's right there in front of you and your vote does count. Because when you come to venues such as this, or city, county, state, or whatever, they listen and they look at the numbers, they look at who votes in the respective precincts. I always quote a particular incident in 1960 when President Kennedy won an election. He won by less than one quarter of a vote per precinct. Now think about that. So your vote actually does count, but it all comes back to you.
I just realized that Mercy and I are the same age.
Good. Good. We share so much in common, commissioners.
Yes, we do.
Prematurely, great.
Is there anything, anything else you want to talk? We're trying to pass some time here because lunch is not going to be ready for another ten minutes. Yes?
My question had to do with what you were talking about earlier, how you help with mentally ill in the prisons. Has the, do you ever send them to the pavilion that's part of Northwest?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I do those too. I do those for the, for twenty-five counties and the Texas Panhandle, I'm in twenty-six counties. I do that every Tuesday morning. We have, the numbers have increased so much in the last two years over the people that are going to Pavilion, it's just unreal. So, we have, we have a huge number of people that are going there and in addition to the people that are in the jail. And so, I go there every Monday afternoon to deal with those. And the saddest thing about those is that whenever I do offer them to be in my program, which the program consists of them doing four things, seeing their doctor before they leave, taking their medication or at least getting their scripts filled, staying out of trouble, and finding a place to go. None of them have a place to go. They are all homeless, every one of them. So, that's a huge problem. So, if you, if you have someone that's in the jail, sometimes they're, they like it there because they have a place to sleep and food to eat, but they don't need to be in jail because of their, what they're charged with. They're not charged with a huge crime and it's costing you, the taxpayer, fifty-six dollars a day to keep them there. So, it is, it's a huge problem, and I'm hoping that I make a difference. Right now, to date, I have thirty-four, thirty-five new cases, mental health cases at the jail. And out of the, out of the thirty-five, it mustn't seem like much, but I have six people that have actually gotten on the program and are out of jail and have not returned to jail. They're actually doing well. So, that's a start. I know it's, that does sound like very many, but it's a start and I'm not going to ever give up on it, and I hope the funding still comes through. I know it's a grant right now that we're getting from TPC, which is the local mental health authority. They have a grant, two-year grant. We have to have one hundred cases come for us before the grant is up in another year and a half. So, I'm hoping that we'll reach that and continue to get the grant and continue to help these people.
So, this mental health issue is a, is a big problem throughout the state. It's not just here in Amarillo. And it's one that counties can't financially handle by themselves. And so, this is an issue that I know four prisons now on a committee on the state level that's looking in what they can do to try to help us. One of the problems is we don't have beds in mental health facilities throughout the state. So, the county jails have become by default the mental health facilities in the state, the largest mental health facility in the state's Harris County Jail. And so, it's a problem statewide, it's a problem that's larger than any one county, even the size of Harris County, Houston, so.
Well, one thing I would add to brag on the judge a little bit, I mean, these are very, very difficult decisions that she has to make as a person, and people's lives are in her hands. And I, as a commissioner, we don't, we don't have to deal with the judicial side of the judges, and she ran on this platform about mental health and trying to establish this court and not really like what it would look like. I mean, it was kind of uncharted territory, but the amount of pressure that's on your shoulders to decide for someone's life is thick, it was very serious. And so, I applaud her for taking this on and because it is a very difficult task and it's way bigger, as Commissioner Church said, than one county. And I can only imagine how defeating it feels every day because you think, how many more are out there? Like, there's so much work to be done that you don't know where to start, and I think it's a good lesson on anything. You just start, and wherever it lands, it lands, but to not be afraid to just start because a lot of things that we deal with, I think as a commissioners' court and as a city and you guys, even in your families and your future, you are the first to just start it. And so, that is very scary. And so, I applaud you guys for trying that and certainly the judge starting for the county because it's, it's very needed.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. I will tell you that there are times, more than, more often than not, that I go home at night and after I've seen some of these people, and I can't get them off my mind because of some of the things that they've done, some of the things that they've said. I had one young man who, I just looked, he's schizophrenic, and I asked him what I could do to help him, and he just looked at me and said, I just need somebody to talk to. He's in a holding cell by himself because he is that dangerous to him. He wants to die that bad, and so, they keep him in a, in his own cell. And it's just, it's just sad. It's just sad to think that there are individuals out there, and this guy is your age, and he does not want to live. And it's not because of not anybody helping him or trying to help him, but I go home at night thinking about him. I look for him on the streets sometimes too, and sometimes I find him. So, anyway, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard job, it's a hard solution. There's no, there's no cause or no cure for, for everybody. I can't just throw a blanket over all of them and say, okay, you're okay now, but you're not, because you're not. So, anyway, it's, it's difficult. So, lunch is going to be ready in about three minutes. Let's go over your schedule really fast for this afternoon. After lunch, you will go to, yes, yes.
As a matter of fact, one question that I have, how do you, precinct, how do the precinct get drawn up?
That's through the census. The census, every ten years, they, they draw on that and sometimes they redistrict, but for the most part, there was mostly the same, same areas. There's a certain part of town for each, for each precinct. You might want to start.
Yes, that's correct. Every ten years, we do it, the census, the national census. And once those figures come back, it's up to the commissioners' court then to take a look at those, in the populations, and try to make the precincts equal as far as population.
Other question?
Yes. Are there gerrymandering complaints during that process?
More on the state level.
More on the state.
But not very much on the, on the local level.
If you look at my precinct, it looks like someone did.
Yeah, I, people always, I mean, that is a common question of what are your precincts? What's the map? And like, mine is east and northeast Amarillo, but it's not a clean little box. I mean, there's lines and, and even when I ran for office, I mean, I had to print the map and go to the elections office and say, here's my address, because I'm two streets away, I live by Cap Rock, and I'm two blocks, two streets away from the next county. I mean, I can walk to Randall County. So, I had to be very particular of, here I am, here's my house, am I eligible to run? Because that's also a requirement, you know, to live in that precinct.
Okay. Before we adjourn, let's go over the schedule really, really fast. After lunch, you will go to the tax office down on the first floor of this building. Sheriff Yager will take you on a little tour, a little lesson on how to collect taxes and how to be nice to people and what all. And then you go into the sheriff's office and will take you on a little tour of the sheriff's administration office as it currently sits at Sixth and Pierce. And then after that, you go to the district courts building with Judge Board, he will give you a tour and a little, little talk, and then you will end up in Pam Sermon's Court in the courthouse on the fourth floor, and that's where you'll receive your certificates. So.
Judge Sandro. I was going to say the committee, maybe, will you tell them the committee's going to go?
Well, I was going to tell you, it's, the food is back there and you have your choice of a hot dog or a hamburger.
Not both.
Not both, unless we get all, everybody served and there's some left, then you can go back.
Okay. That's it. Is there something else?
Yeah, I was just going to add that the committee, and you may stand again if you're in the committee, if you feel so obliged to do so, but we're going to be walking through the day with you. Judge Tanner's going to be with us for the majority of the day, and Commissioner Church and Commissioner Kelly will be with everyone through the day. So, we're going to help you move through all of these locations. Some of it is walking distance. So, if you are driving, it is all walking distance, so don't feel like you have to take a vehicle, but last year, a couple of the students took their vehicle, and that's fine.[1785.00]